We have been informed by the city clerk that only for appropriations, a majority, supermajority vote is required, and therefore, the vote that was taken to borrow $2.5 million for public safety capital expenditures has been approved. Thank you. Let's go into document 37214.
Notice is hereby given the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, December 16th in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment of the revised ordinances to be amended by deleting the following section from the municipal vote concerning handicap parking on Alston Street, South Side, from 1.155 feet southerly of the intersection of Marston Street to 1.175 feet southerly intersection of Marston Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on December 8.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against document 37214, handicap parking for two, Alston Street? If there is none, councilors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve, or it has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Council, I'm gonna take the liberty to delay our communication on 39514, and we're gonna move on to committee reports.
Thank you.
And then we will go back, once we do this, committee reports and approve the withdrawn documents as a package, we will go back to document 39514, okay? Committee reports. Wow. Madam Chair of the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Council President. On December 3rd, 2014, the ordinance committee met. We reviewed document 331-12, which was non-emergency constituent phone services. This had been put on the agenda by Council Vasquez. Council Vasquez was actually at our ordinance committee meeting, and he requested that the item be reassigned to the Public Safety Committee, and so we sent it up here for review by you and reassignment. I make that in the form of a committee report.
Through you.
I'm sorry, where, you, you're making that in...
The form of a committee report, because it's just the reassignment of the document.
Oh, okay. Reassignment of the document to?
To the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. President.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Through you, Mr. President.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. There's a motion on the floor. Do you have a...
Yeah, I actually was gonna suggest that we withdraw, because it's already in the subcommittee, the Public Safety Subcommittee, so there's no need...
It's already, so it's, this is a duplicate?
Yeah, we'll withdraw it at this level. It's already in the agenda of the Subcommittee.
Okay.
I apologize if there wasn't...
You wanna change your motion?
So, yeah, I guess I'll withdraw my motion, and make a motion to withdraw the document.
There's a motion on the floor to withdraw document 33112. It has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Document number 378-14 was livery services, was integrity medical transport out of 599 Canal Street. There was a Mr. Cipriano Vargas and Officer Jose Flores from the Lawrence Police Department, Hackney Division. The item is a new livery license, and it's with regard to a medical contracting company. We did stress to the applicant that he has a commercial address at the 599 Canal Street, he also has a residence in Lawrence, that if there's, he's gonna have two to four vans, depending on how big his business gets, but he cannot store the vans at the residence. They have to be at 599 Canal Street or in a commercial parking lot, and the applicant did understand that. The paperwork was in order. It came from Officer Flores with a favorable recommendation. It came up from the Subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to grant this livery license, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made to approve document 37814. It has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Continue.
Similarly, document number 383-14 was a prohibition against carrying certain weapons. This is amending an ordinance that's on our books currently, so that it is in alignment with state law, which it wasn't prior to this amendment. And this was put on the agenda by Council Vasquez, and it came up from the Subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to amend the sub, to amend the ordinance and to order a public hearing on those amendments, and I make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion on the floor to order a public hearing for this document, and it has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Document 384-14 is the St. Patrick's Day Parade to occur in Lawrence on Sunday, March 8th, 2015. Write it down, Sunday, March 8th, 2015, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. This came up from the Subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to approve the parade, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made to approve document 38414, and it has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Document 398-14 is a private livery license called High Class Transportation. Their address is 296 Broadway. It was put on the agenda by Hendra, Henry, I'm gonna say your last name wrong, I apologize.
Ponciano.
Ponciano, thank you very much, and with Officer Flores of the Hackney Division. This is a slightly different type of livery service. Typically, liveries are like the medical contracting or the school servicing contracting.
Second.
Yeah, so it came up with the Subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve, and I make that in the form of a motion for purposes of discussion.
Motion has been made improperly second to approve document 39414. Or in favor, say aye.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm sorry. I've been ignored all night. I'm sorry. I guess I'm going too fast. Mr. Toomey.
Thank you. I was reading the authorization, and it says here, "The purpose of the grant is to fund the academy salary and fringe benefits cost for new recruits, the salary and fringe benefits cost for new officers, and department overtime costs." May I speak to the chief about this?
Of course. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, this grant, how many offices is it, is it gonna cover?
This is...
Are there new offices?
Excuse me?
Are there gonna be new offices?
No, this is, this is, the majority of these monies will go towards retention of the offices that we already have.
Office is yours, so it doesn't reflect the new, any new offices coming down the line?
No, it does, it does not.
And after the grant runs out, these offices are still on the payroll. There's not any additional costs to the city because of it?
No. They'll still be on the, these are, this will cover the offices that are coming off the, we have the COPS grant. It'll cover them being transferred off of that from the federal grant. They'll pick up the end of it till, till the end of the fiscal year.
What happens when the grant runs out? When this grant runs out?
When this grant runs out, they'll still be retained as part of the next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All set? Let's take a vote again.
Sorry.
That's great. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Councilors, I would like to take withdrawn document as a package, so that we can withdraw all those documents.
Just one document that I, I feel, I'm sorry, Council President, through you. 4714, there's snow removal from private contractors. I wanted to know if we can keep...
I'm sorry, which document?
4714, which is snow removal through private contractors.
There's snow removal private contractor, you wanna keep that?
Yeah, I would like to, only because, we have, I've had a lot of complaints about...
Just that we, we ask every council to give us, if you want to introduce later, I would, let's remove it.
Because we're in winter right now.
Huh?
We're already in winter, like...
Yes, I know that.
We were having problems with the private contractors.
Wait, 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 let's not talk oral ones.
Can I, the reason that we talked about this at Subcommittee, because we knew it was an interesting issue, but there is another snow removal item on the Subcommittee already that Council Alvarez has on it, that's not identical but extremely similar, so I think we're thinking that we could...
Does it have to do with the private contractors?
We could, we're addressing...
It has to do with snow removal.
It says snow removal.
Because this thing about the private contractors is private contractors damaging, no, damaging private property, knocking over fences, not doing what they're supposed to do the correct way, putting snow where they're not supposed to put it, blocking other people in, I can go on and on. It was something that happened...
So, Mr. President, through you, Mr. President.
Just give me a second.
I've heard, I've heard the similar concerns, and so, we can, I'd be happy to add your name...
Yeah, that's fine, cool.
To my document.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
All right, and then we could address all of it.
Mm-hmm, and I can, we can put together the complaints that I have with the complaints that you have.
Because we could just do like a whole package of that.
And then the other thing that I wanted to do also was to know how they get dispersed across the city, who is in my district as a private contractor when it snows, like, I would like to know that, because I remember the private, the prior administration had done something where they had had those magnetic things that they would put it on, they would put on their private trucks, so that we knew who was working for the city and who wasn't working for the city. I don't know if that's still functioning, or if that's still...
They only did it the first winter.
It didn't even work, right? Or, I'm not even sure what happened with that, but I, that was very helpful for me, because I was able to be, you know, to identify those private vehicles, because we have other private vehicles that drive around our city, who that are, you know, that, like, if I want somebody to come and plow my driveway or something, and what if, what if that person does something to private property, and we don't know if it was, that person was, was or wasn't working for the city. It was a private rental for someone's private use. So, that's what came into play, because then the private contractors were, you know, well, that wasn't me, it was, you know, I got hired for XYZ, so that's the reason why...
Would it be okay with you if we threw her document, we can...
Yeah, I don't mind merging it with her.
Excellent.
I just wanted to clarify as to why, because I wanted to make sure that we're able to discuss the item with her subject.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Through you, Council President. You had asked the councilors to please let us know, and then Vanister Councilor Plant, he actually sent me an email, he copied Lilian on it. It was document number 305-13, which was the resident sticker parking on Methuen Street, between Jackson and Appleton Streets. That was not supposed to come up, and that came up by my error, so I was hoping, if we make a motion, if we could leave that one out. And similarly, we told people anything from 213 forward, and so he didn't tell me that 199-14, which we thought was duplicative, because we already have the charter stuff going on, but he didn't want this rolled in with the rest of the charter, he wanted it as a separate item.
I'm sorry, what document was that?
199-14, at the bottom of the list there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, what were you saying about that?
Well, we thought that we had the charter document open as an, as an open document, so just roll it into that.
Exactly. So, we're gonna keep 199-14 open?
So, we're gonna keep that one open. So, 305-13 and 199-14, if they can go back to committee, everything else can get withdrawn.
Okay. What I would like to do is send a, send a mo, I'm sorry.
And 175, that was the licensing board chairman actually expressed some interest in that, and I need to follow back with him on that, 175-14. But I don't mind. What's that?
Can we send it to Public Safety?
It needs to be an ordinance change. You send it to Public Safety, it's going...
Oh, it needs an ordinance change.
Well, okay. I don't mind if it goes, I don't mind if it goes to Public Safety.
We at least have a, have the discussion there?
Yeah.
You want more words?
Sure.
You're already at...
That's fine, I don't have a problem.
It's a Public Safety, right?
Pardon?
You're on Public Safety, right?
I am not.
You're not, oh, okay.
I think we should have it.
Okay. Again, we have document 305-13, 175-14, and 189-14 that is being excluded from withdrawn documents on this package. So, what I would like to do is send us a motion to withdraw all, to take it as a package, all these documents, and excluding 305-13, 175-14, and 199-14.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second to withdrawn the documents listed, and not going, the clerk has a list of them, so I'm not going to mention them individually, and the motion is to exclude document 305-13, 175-14, and 199-14. So, we're gonna take a motion. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go back to document 395-14. Councilors, I provided you with a sort of a legal advice document on what we can say publicly about each one of the items that you receive a package of, what we should discuss in a secondary session, and what we should not discuss at all.
I don't see, I mean, if we wanna have this as a discussion among ourselves, then maybe we should, you guys send this to some committee or something for, to address it.
Mike?
Because the idea, it's not working. The idea was that, ooh, the idea for having this discussion was to have it with the mayor, and since the mayor refuses to have the discussion, I don't think we should be discussing it at all. I mean, I know we need to, but we need to do it here.
I think it is important that we discuss this document among ourselves and come to understand what is going on. I think it is important.
Well, it's important...
Whether the mayor chooses or not to, to come to this council and give us an explanation, or at least answer questions, I think it is important for us to understand them. If, if we are not, I don't know how you feel about it, and I would like to bring that open for discussion, but when the mayor said that he was open for communication, he was, he was not being honest. With all due respect to the mayor, he was not being honest, because he knows that he refused to meet with Councilor Bernard, myself, and two city attorney when I requested the meeting.
On one specific issue?
Yes, well, yes, on one specific issue involving possible litigation, yes, yes. The mayor feels that this is a matter of personnel, and we have no jurisdiction on issues of personnel, and while I agree with him in some of these matters that are listed, I have to disagree, because there are other items in the list that involves ordinances where the, where the city council have to participate and take appropriate action by a vote of two-thirds. So, here we are. Again, the, the question is, do we accept the fact that the mayor is not willing to communicate with this city council? Do we keep our mouth shut and allow the mayor to continue doing what he's doing? Or do we, as a council, send a strong message to the mayor? So, it is open, I open it for discussion. Councilor Bernard?
Just make a comment on that, Council President, thank you.
Motion to go past 10.
There's a motion on the floor to go beyond 10.
Second.
It has been second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
I'm not, I wouldn't support making a motion to, I don't even know what you said, it's so in my brain, vote of no confidence against the mayor. First of all, I do have the utmost confidence in the mayor, so I wouldn't be comfortable making that motion to begin with. I hear the phrase disregarding, and I think what they meant was disrespecting you several times tonight, and I don't feel disregarded or disrespected, and I have, every time I've reached out to the mayor, he has answered my calls, and I know for the most part, I haven't heard anyone tell me, I've called him and he's not taking my call. So, if that is happening, please let me know, because I'm not aware of it. But second of all, what I do want us to remember as a body is, we do have a charter, we do have ordinances, they need to be enforced, absolutely. If we feel that something's wrong, we should, we should question it, absolutely, but this body's not the hiring authority. We don't set personnel policy, we don't hire every clerk and person along the line. What we do do is we create the ordinances, we adopt the budget, we confirm department heads, and only department heads, and only specific department heads as outlined in the charter. We hire the city attorney, and we hire the city clerk. That's, that's what we do. If I don't like who he's hired somewhere down the rung, I, I know the last public meeting we had, a gentleman got up and spoke and said, "I was fired, and I know I don't have the license I needed for my job, and I know that's why I was fired." So, I'm thinking to myself, okay, that's very good of you to acknowledge that, I'm surprised you're here speaking, and he was upset because the person that was hired after him didn't have the license, and he, that was his point. But if you read the ordinance, it says you have, I believe it was like 60 or 90 days from the date of hire to get that license. So, yes, he made up hire, the person went out and got their license, yes, they didn't have it on day one, but they had it by day 90. That, the ordinance was followed in that instance. So, I do think we do need to look at the instances at hand and say, are there true violations? One of the things I do agree with, and we talked about this after the last meeting, was whether there's actual impropriety, or just the appearance, this microphone is so loud, whether there's actual impropriety, just the appearance of impropriety, I think a discussion is important. I do think us having a conversation as a body, it would be very helpful, and I do think based on the nature that it's personnel, or that some of it's union, that some of it's litigation oriented, that is definitely an appropriate conversation to have in executive session, and I was surprised that that didn't go the way that it went this evening. But that, all that being said, I still don't think that's anything that would warrant a motion of, I can't even see the phrase, because it's just moving through my brain.
No confidence.
I have no confidence. And, and I've stated the reason why I don't think it's appropriate, but I also do think that a conversation would be an appropriate thing, and I do think it would also be an appropriate conversation to have in executive session. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes?
The mayor was here today. I understand that we shouldn't, like, if we ask him to come, we shouldn't be expecting to talk about specific topics or person, people on the, on the list. We all know, there's a lot of problems, and I think it was healthy enough for us to invite him, and it was disrespectful enough not to stay, because we could have gone to a executive session. That was easy, he was here. We don't have to discuss, if the mayor is, this back and forth, we shouldn't be doing this. He was here with us, at least with me for four years. I do not recognize the mayor. It's a totally different person. It's a totally different person. What would, how will he feel if he's on this side? Two years ago, if the past administration would do this to us, what will be his reaction? Your reaction? You smiling, what will be your reaction? That's what I'm afraid of. If we don't do something now, what are we gonna be expecting in two more years? Like, we can't say anything, we didn't do anything when we were supposed to, and a lot of the stuff that were, that are here, we've been talking about it on the council. We have paperwork of, I'm not gonna say which one, that is violating the city charter, that he voted it for, that he voted it for. Thank you for the info. He voted it for that, still, we haven't done anything about it. So, when it's gonna be an end? When it's gonna be, he knows that we are serious about this. We have people calling, I have people calling me, saying, "Are you guys serious? Like, are you guys not gonna do anything about it? Like, when is this gonna end?" So, I think we should, I, I will support a not, confident for the mayor. I will. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilors?
President?
Just let me say one, one, and then I, I yield the floor. I wish there was, this was a matter of personnel, and, and choosing who and how, but when you look at this document that you have in front of you and that you have hopefully reviewed, we are talking about two things, due process, due process, and violation of the city charter, basically. So, we're not talking, we are not defending employees, we are not arguing against firing or hiring, we are simply, we are simply saying is, follow due process. Simple. Okay? Follow due process and adhere to the constitution of our city, because without a constitution, if we choose to violate our constitution, our city charter, our ordinances, if we choose to violate them at will, then I'm afraid that we're gonna create chaos. That's where real chaos can be created. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I was disappointed that the mayor chose not to stay for the discussion. I was looking forward to it. It's not like the mayor can't see us as partners. I love to see myself as a partner. I know he wants to do good, I want to do good, but I see it as disrespect when we extend an invitation and he refuses to honor it. I see it as disrespect when I pick up the paper and they know about a report that we technically should have been involved in from day one, and the reason why I even know about it is because I read it in the paper. And I take it as disrespect when our mayor calls us a kangaroo court. If that's not disrespect, then what is it? I mean, it's one thing that voters come here and they insult us, and, you know, it's kind of unfortunately become a custom, I accept it, but the mayor knows better. I wouldn't call him names, and I don't appreciate that a body that I work with, their backs off to make it happen, to get me elected. They got me money, they went out and did, I wanted those people there as much as he wanted, you know, his friends, and, and some very important officials to be part of it. And that there kind of started a little bit of, of affliction, but I got over it. I said, "Well, you know, let's get over it, let's move on." We've moved on, and there have been clearly, the issue about who the mayor hires, in all honesty, I don't care. I mean, I know, and I'm not gonna fool myself, I'm not an ostrich that'll put my head in the sand, that every mayor hires the people that they need to live up to his agenda, to live up to his promises. I have no problem with that. When people tell me, "You know he's hiring only the people that can pay for him," I say, "Yeah, and?" Because all the mayors do that. What concerns me is whether we are following the ordinance, whether or not the mayor is taking us as partners, okay, and not being the ones that have to learn things through the newspaper, through whatever source of media. I think we deserve better than that. I think we have very, very astute people here. I think many have, you know, acute analytical abilities that can be helpful to the mayor, but we haven't had the chance. So, I'm not an enemy of the mayor, and I am a partner, and I feel disrespected, because I'm so disappointed. When I saw him, I lit up, I said, "Oh, yeah, he's here, we're gonna face this, we're gonna," you know, and again, I don't care who he hires, but I do care about the ordinance. I care that if you're going to put a report, and if that, or go into our election department, that I wanna know about it. That's stuff that concerns us. I wanna know if there's gonna be a reorganization of any department, it comes through this body. It has so all these years. So, why is it different under this administration? I again recognize and understand the mayor is a very astute individual, we need to be able... the mayor is a, a very, um, astute individual. We need to be able to, uh, stand up and, uh, stand up with him side to side and not behind him, always playing catch-up. So that's all I have to say, um, Mr. President. I don't know how far we're going to take this, whether people want to, um, to vote no confidence on the mayor. I mean, I think that if it does happen, if this body does, by a majority of the vote, vote no confidence, that, um, it's been brought about not because we've wanted to, but because, again, there are real issues. It's no, it's not all nonsense. We're not bamboozling here. There are some, some real issues that pertain to us having constant communication and going. But see, individually, picking off each councillor individually can be seen as, you know, divide and conquer. And that's not something that I'm going for because this is a beautiful body of people. I, I, I like coming here because, I enjoy the company of very smart people, you know. Um, I've been privileged to, to be with you. Whether we agree or disagree, um, we all have a lot of respect for each other and a, and a lot of love, so. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do, Council President.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my, my reasoning is, is more, you know, Danny said on, on, our mayor's side on this side, and he fought for a lot of the same reasons that we are, are looking over this evening. My comment earlier, I mean, it being that I would love for the 2.5 million dollars to come out of our free cash, but here we are saying we really can't do that because we've got all of this litigation that we, we need to maybe, you know, have that money for, et cetera. That's hurtful to think that the decisions that someone is making, that they fought so hard for to not have someone else make, being on this side, that it's going to cost us in a sense that it could. Um, and it has. We took the vote and the vote passed, even though it's a draft, but we're going to be borrowing. So that's going to cost us 2.5 million dollars on top of the litigation. Because we are going to finance that money if it does continue to go up that way. It, it, and if things were done correctly, we wouldn't be getting, um, this, these litigations, uh, pending that we have, some that are, are at the moment, and some that, um, may, uh, constitute trouble damages. And that's very hurtful, um, because of the decisions that one person has made. Um, and I'm going to say this and not, uh, as a, as a, as a person, as a body, being outside of the political aspect of this whole thing. He's a wonderful person, but having it be where we are in this political area and the decisions that have been made is what's causing this whole ripple effect. A person for themselves like us, when we leave here, we tend to, we leave everything here. We don't take anything personal because we really can't, we really can't. This, this, um, personally, when we, when we, uh, you know, are, are, we, we differ our ideas here as a body, we make sure that we don't take this home, just like we don't bring our personal problems here. Meaning the same distance between ourselves and the third floor, that we have to protect the reasons why we, you know, we have to protect what he goes and does in the sense that we, we vote on that. That's how we protect it. But how are we supposed to protect something when someone makes a decision that's going to cost us a litigation when we need that money? We've seen it here tonight, to, for our public safety, to hire new police officers, to hire new firemen, to get the snorkel thing, to, to get the, the machines that read, um, you know, the license plates, which before I knew the information given, now I'm for them. Um, you know, and this could not cost us nothing but the cost of it. But it's going to cost us more. It's going to cost us 2.5 million dollars if we do finances. And it's going to cost us our 9.5 million dollars in litigation. And that's, that's, that's hurtful. It's hurtful to think that. I'm not, I'm not saying that it's going to cost us 9.5 million dollars in litigation, but they're telling us, "Let's not touch this 9.5 million dollars because we need it for litigation." And, and it's, and that's, that was my point. So, um,
I.
It's, it's, it's hurtful.
Thank you. I wish that, um, communication between the mayor and the city council would have been better. I honestly wish, uh,
So bad.
God knows that, that I have tried.
Tried to call him?
I put in your file a letter that I sent to the mayor about the election office. Uh, I inform you that the mayor hired somebody from North Andover to reorganize or to make changes to the election department without, without even communicating with the city council, without even telling the immediate supervisor of that department, Mr. Maloney, without even telling him, excluding him totally. Okay? Is that communication? Is that a willingness to communicate? No, it's not. I'm sorry. It's not. I just, I just don't believe in the honesty of the mayor in saying that he's willing to communicate. I don't believe it. I'm sorry.
Can I just say one point? People keep talking about litigation as if it's some novel thing against this mayor that's never happened before. I know that there's definitely litigation against the current mayor, but let us not pretend that there wasn't multiple lawsuits against Mayor Antigua. But go right down the wall. Mayor Sullivan, multiple lawsuits. Mr. Devers, the very short time he was there, lawsuits against him. Mrs. Dowling, same thing. Mrs. Kennedy. I mean, every single mayor has had lawsuits against them.
Oh, definitely.
To pretend that this is the reason we don't have money for public safety because there's a lawsuit against the mayor, isn't fact, that's not correct. We owe we budget for litigation because it comes constantly. Anytime somebody doesn't like something the mayor does, whether it's right or not, they have the right to file for litigation. They'll lose, but they have the right to file for litigation. I mean, that's people's rights in that court system.
I agree with you. I agree with you. But the problem comes if the mayor is advised by legal counsel. If the mayor is advised by legal counsel, okay, that he's taking the wrong actions and that it's going to constitute violation of the city charter and violation of due process.
Sure.
And he still continues to do that, then, then there's a problem.
I can remember being on a conference call with our former mayor and attorney William Kelly from the ABCC and him telling him that the way we were appointing members to our licensing commission was wrong. And the mayor still chose to do it anyway. And I actually have a ludicrous, I think we all have a ludicrous email trying to justify why we were doing it, that we were creating new legal precedent. Let us not pretend that this didn't happen with prior mayors. Like, I guess that's what I'm trying to say is, we act like this is something that's... Mayors have to take a stance. If they make a stance one way or the other, that's going to go with what they believe. But every mayor gets sued. That's part of being the mayor.
Of course.
I think if you took that personally as a mayor, you'd have a problem. But I just looked down the wall. I mean, I only know back as far as, I believe, Mayor Buckley, I don't know who's before him. That's before my youth. But every mayor that in my lifetime has been sued multiple times. Um, and to pretend that having that litigation was a reason that we didn't have money for public safety or other things, that's not accurate.
Yeah, the, the question is, the question is, when are we going to make things better? If we, if we look back and say, "This mayor did this, and this mayor did that, and this mayor did that, so consequently this mayor," it's okay to do that. When are we going to improve matters? When are we going to make things better? When are we going to make things better? Do we have a responsibility to make things better? Do we?
And Council President, I want to, um, as an example, Mayor Sullivan, people can say whatever he wants about Mayor Sullivan, but he had charisma and he would actually come before the council. And he would talk to us, you know, about what was going on. And if he had a new, you know, initiative, he would also talk to us about it. And, and he would address us as a body. It would be communication from the mayor and he would attend several, if not, you know, ninety percent of the council meetings, particularly during his first term. With his first term of office, he came out of being a council at large, from being side to side with us, and he said, "Because I know what it is to sit on that, in that chair, you know, I want to have this communication with you, you know, that helps us all work together." And he would do that. And if he was in an event, he would call the councillors forward and say, "Look, uh, these are my wonderful councillors" and share a proclamation with all of us. He just had this desire to improve and maintain an open dialogue with the council. And, and we would have some doozies, you know, we're not saying that we never, hey, we would have some doozies, but we would know that it wasn't personal and, and we would move on. And, and that's what I'm saying again. You know, we can't keep saying, apologizing for doing the wrong thing and then continue to do the wrong thing. Because then you're not being honest.
Okay. Um, unless there's any other discussion, I would like to entertain a motion to take a vote on no confidence on the mayor.
Was there a motion on the floor?
No, there is no.
I would like to entertain a motion.
I would like to, um, make a motion to vote a not confident vote for the mayor.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion had been made on properly second discussion.
I just, I'm sorry. Is this on the agenda tonight, a vote of no confidence? Is, is that something that we can just take whenever we feel like?
Well, uh, it was intended to be part of the discussion, but obviously there's no discussion, uh, because we don't have answers.
I'm just wondering if that's...
Bending the rules or?
Well, let's see whether we are bending the rules. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would it be appropriate for this council to take a vote or no confidence on the mayor based on the fact that he chose not to communicate with the city council?
I, I don't know if I can answer that. Procedurally, I would tell you that, um, any motion on an item that's on the agenda would be available.
Okay? Okay.
So we're saying we want to follow the rules better and we want to hold other people more accountable and we're not going to follow our own standard that we're setting?
Well, basically, what, basically what we are saying is that as part of the discussion of this document, document 39514, we are taking a decision based on that document. And based on the, on, on the option of the mayor not to communicate with this council. That's what we are saying.
We're taking action on, on a document that's already
Exactly.
on the agenda.
So this is not a new document. It's not a new item. We are simply taking, uh, uh, action on a document that we are not able to get answers on. Okay?
I'm sorry. I just disagree. I,
No, that's okay. That's okay. That, that's what we are here for. That's, that's why, that's what we are talking and we are discussing this matter.
We've got this, this is what we're supposed to, this is, I guess, what we're supposed to be talking about tonight, this packet right here?
That's correct.
And so we went from this packet right here to a no confidence vote in the mayor. And I wasn't prepared tonight. I mean, I thought we, you know, we got more information regarding the do's and don'ts for tonight's discussion.
That's what I was hoping for, Mr. Plant. That's what I was hoping for, and we are not going to get it. We're not going to get it. We're not going to get it. That's a fact.
Council President?
Yes.
Just two seconds. Um, I, I, I totally, um, feel what you're saying, um, Councilwoman Plant. Seriously, um, there's no reason, you know, for us to not feel that way, and I get you. But we really, we have an empty podium. We have an empty podium. We have, that, that made my vote what it is right now. We were looking for answers and we could have gone into an executive session. We, we could have, um, he could have said yea or nay, or, um, "I'll answer this one and I can't answer this one" and, or whatever, but at least have been here. And not just two minutes of public participation. He could have exempted to the, um, answering the questions, just staying for the discussion, I think. I don't know. I just, I just feel, um, I feel disheartened because of the vote that we have to take, but I feel, I feel like I have to in a way because we're not getting an answer to what, like, we've asked for. And, you know, it stinks, but let's, let's, let's put a little bit of Febreeze on it and see if it goes away, all right? What else can we do? I have to vote that way. Sorry.
Council President?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to try to object, please.
Okay.
See you in two weeks.
Yep.
Shadow.
Uh, shadow objection, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, eliminates the, uh, the, uh, motion. Obviously, shadow objection can only be done once on this particular item. So we will bring this matter again, uh, to the city council at the next city meeting, at the next council meeting.
Okay. That will be?
Okay.
January?
January?
Jan, uh, well, I was hoping, I was hoping that we will,
Three Kings Day.
Can you? Because of the proximity to the new year, I was hoping that we can move on to, uh, give me January. Can we meet on the 13th?
Yes.
Is it okay?
It's better, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, councillors? So this full council will meet again on the 13th, uh, so that we can, uh, take this matter again. And again, uh, shadow objection can only be done once on one, on this item. So we will discuss it again, and...
I, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Council President, if we were, um, if there were communication between you and the mayor from here to then, are we still open as a body to discuss?
We are still open. What we want is communication. And obviously, there are very sensitive matters that the attorneys need to be present. And, and again, my suggestion to the mayor was that Councilor Bernard and I, with the two city attorney, will meet with the mayor and any other councillor of his choice so that we can discuss sensitive issues that can affect the taxpayer and can increase the liability of the taxpayer. So of course I'm open, of course. And this council should always be open to communication, always.
Right.
Always.
So that, um, no, no, I'm, I'm just saying that...
So if there is a willingness on the part of the mayor to meet and discuss these items with the city attorney and, and, and Councilor Bernard and me, by all means, I would be more than willing to do that.
Yeah, because he perhaps will revisit, think it over and consider, you know, coming that we're not his enemies and, he'll come and talk to us.
Of course, of course. Yes. Okay, just a couple of information because there's one more document that we need to discuss. I, I was informed that chapter forty-four of the state law, section seven, says that it requires two-thirds vote on the approval of a loan. Chapter forty-four, section seven. We are going to confirm that. We are going to confirm it.
It does require, right?
And if it is required, then we're going to have to go back to this item and take a vote again. We, we, actually, we may have to call for a special meeting.
A special meeting?
Well, uh, I, I think that the, the vote, the vote that we took is going to stand until we get a legal opinion from the attorney and a review of chapter seventy-four, section seven.
Okay.
Okay? And if we have to, uh, Mr. Arnello, Mr. Arnello, can you please come forward? Can you tell me about the, uh, the sense of urgency on this thing? Uh, I know you mentioned about timing. Can you tell us?
Well, the, uh, the, um, the quotes that are for the police cruisers and for the plate readers, uh, the quote for police cruisers is, is one thirty, expires on January 31st.
January 31st.
January 31st. For the plate readers, he said it was 12:31, so...
Okay, so, so we have plenty of time.
We have...
Not for the, not for the plate readers because it's only to the end of the month.
I'm sorry, the plate reader what?
Plate readers were 12:31. That's what he and Justin indicated to me a moment ago.
31 of December?
Yes.
Wow.
Could we call for an extension?
I'm sorry.
We can have a special meeting.
Could, I'm sorry, through you, Council President, could we ask for some type of extension through that company? Can we call them and let them know?
I have to, you know, I guess that would be, we could make, uh, the police department, but I, I know they were purchasing off of state contracts, so I think the state con, you know, um, this...
25th, why not make it the 25th? I think, I want to make an appeal to the three that voted against to reconsider and, and allow us to... and allow us to vote on this properly.
What's wrong with the vote, taking it out of, what do you mean, properly? I don't know what you mean by properly. You know, you can always take it out of the free cash.
Yeah. Yep.
But that's the issue.
But we have not authorized, we have not authorized that. It requires two-thirds vote, also.
Well, that's right, I understand that.
Okay.
But he's saying that we should vote to get it out of free cash.
Yeah. Would that be a new public hearing?
Yeah, I'm afraid that we will have to have a new public hearing. It will take more time, again, because we will have to pause for a public hearing, and go through the same process again, because now will be an appropriation.
Take it as an emergency, no. Take it as an emergency item today.
I'm sorry?
We can't.
We will have to order a public hearing. We will need the public input.
It could be taken as an emergency item today if...
For Christmas. For Christmas, that's going to cost, it's going to cost my grandkids $2.5 million. No. No. Mm-mm.
My question, my question again, is there a willingness on the part of any one of the three that voted against to change a vote? Simple?
No.
No? 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 Okay.
Okay, so let's go home.
Then, no, 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 this is, this is a very serious matter. There is a time, a timeframe on this. I mean, if there's not a willingness, no matter what we do, no matter what we do, we're still going to end up with, we're not going to end up with a two-thirds vote. Simple. So, my question is, we cannot take a motion to appropriate, because we have to...
Take it out of free cash.
I just have one clarification for the free cash vote. That would require, first, every loan order or financial order requires the overseer's approval. I don't know if the overseer would be amenable to taking it out of free cash. So it may not be possible, but, you know, I don't want to speak for her, but it would not be my recommendation. She usually follows my, Bob Noons, and the new fiscal overseer would follow my recommendation, so...
Okay.
It's going to be problematic, but that would require a new, a new agenda item and then the advertising process.
Oh. Right. Can I ask, if we took the, if we lowered the amount to take out the readers or whatever, would people, and then took that piece from free cash, would people be willing to consider a different amount?
That was an option that I mentioned to Councilor Vasquez about borrowing 1.5 and taking one out of the free cash, but again, it will require, it will require approval from the overseer, and it will require a public hearing. That's where the problem is.
Well, we could, you can vote on the loan order at a reduced amount. We can get that taken care of. If you could get a two-thirds vote, that could happen tonight, and then the remaining would be up in the air.
I'm sorry?
The loan order can be reduced, or...
We can borrow 1.5 million, and then take, put on the agenda a 1 million appropriation from the free cash.
Well, I don't know if it would get on your agenda, because the overseer would have to approve it first, but, but one and a half million would buy, well, I would, there's three items on the loan order, I would approve, you know, one or some of those items.
Okay.
So I most definitely...
Because then it would match.
Wait, 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 wait.
If it's amenable.
Let's, okay, let's, let's understand what we may be doing, because it will have to be a reconsideration of the vote.
No.
No, no, because actually, it didn't go, it didn't go through.
Point of order, Mr. President.
If the case is that Chapter 44, Session 7 states that two-thirds are required, well, let me ask a question again to the three people that voted against it. Would borrowing only 1.5 million satisfy you?
I will answer that question for myself. No.
No?
Because, no, because one penny or $2.5 million, I would love to have the overseer here, because I would like to ask him some questions, like, why wouldn't he approve it? Why wouldn't it be, oh, sorry, her, it be feasible? And just some ques, I would like some answers as to, like, why not? I would like to know that.
Okay.
If.
Councilor Aquino?
No. I won't consider to change my vote.
To me? No. Okay, then, does anyone would like to make, no, we will have to include it, do we have to include it as a new item to, for appropriation?
Yes.
Yes.
Council President?
Okay, so, it's not going to happen.
I see you leaving.
Okay. It's not going to happen.
Council President? I did hear that Councilor District Day, I did hear that the Councilor District Day said that she might be amenable if the overseer was here to explain that if she was convinced by the overseer that perhaps that she would maybe reconsider her vote.
By the overseer's not here?
Well, not here tonight, but I guess it's the question of timing. So, we can delay this and get the overseer here, and deadlines are going to fall, right? We're not going to meet some of these deadlines, let's just face the facts, right? But, but maybe Councilor Monte would, she'll hear what the overseer has to say, and maybe that would be compelling, I don't know. Can we, can we arrange for that?
Okay, the question is, when?
Who are they? The deadline, the deadline is, is not an issue. Doesn't seem to be an issue, so...
Mr. President?
Why come in earlier?
Okay.
Doesn't seem to be an issue, so...
Thank you. I do recall making a motion, and I believe it was second by Councilor Neil Calvares Rodriguez, to approve 200, I mean, not 200, 2,499,999 dollars and 99 cents. We never voted on the motion. If we're not going to take a vote, I would wish...
We never did vote on the motion.
No. The motion wasn't recognized.
The motion was recognized, and we had a second, yes.
Not by the president, not by the council president.
Well, the question, again, the question is...
It was, I remember. And it's in the meetings.
The question is, we are removing one, one single cent.
It's one cent, but I would like, if I do present it, I did present it as a motion, and even if it fails once again, I would like for it to fail.
Let's discuss the motion. The motion, there was a motion made that we approve a loan of 1 mil, 2 million...
499,000. Yes.
Okay. And you said you second the motion?
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions?
It will not go any, a penny, we're here to fight for every single penny of the citizen's vote.
Let's take a vote on the motion.
Who goes first?
Let's take a vote, let's take a vote on the motion, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay. Take, roll call.
Yes.
Council Aquino?
No.
Council Monte?
No. Nié, nunca.
Councilor Tumi?
Bruno's.
Councilor Plant?
Yes.
And Council Vasquez?
Yes.
And Council President Maldonado?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, same, same result.
We don't have a two-thirds majority. Counselors, again, in the absence of a two-thirds majority, there is no authorization...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2,499,999 and 98 cents.
Second?
There's a motion on the floor, again, 2 million, what, can you, can you tell me what is the strategy?
My strategy right now is that I'm going to personally vote against it, and then I will be on the proceeding, on the losing side, and then on the next council meeting, I will re-bring it back. Hopefully, we will have a majority of the council here, and we will be able to vote in favor of it. Thank you. I'm being very honest about it here right now. And Councilor La Plant, ready to go to you?
There's a motion on the floor to approve, authorize the borrowing of 2, tell me the number again?
It's 2,499,000, 2,499,999 dollars and 98 cents.
Okay, who seconded the motion?
I did.
There's a second on the motion, let's take a vote.
Discussion.
No, no, let's not, what do you want to discuss it for?
That's why, I want to discuss...
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
That that's why the tools are there. You know, people scream at us, "Why are you using that avenue," or whatever. Those avenues are there, they're in the charter, that's why we're using them.
Okay. Okay. There's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly seconded, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Council Vasquez?
No.
Council La Plant?
No.
Council Tumi?
No.
Council Reyes noted, Councilor Monte?
I would if I say aye.
You should.
I would if I say aye.
Go vote.
I would if I say aye.
Council Aquino?
I would if I say no.
Perfect. Council Brunel?
Yes.
Council Calvares Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes.
President, can I ask you, I know I see, people are trying to leave...
I'm not going to go beyond this. Counselors, Document 210-14.
210-14.
210-14.
On the table.
You have, is the document, the language?
What is it, old business?
Of the ordinance, the change in the ordinance regarding...
Motion to take 210-14 out of table?
There's a motion to take Document 210-14 out of table, is there a second?
Second.
Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, Document 210-14 is a new language changing the 90 days policy of temporary employees. Let me find it myself. Do you guys have it handy? Oh, here it is.
I emailed and brought a hard copy to everybody.
Huh?
I brought a hard copy to your offices.
It's, I don't have it.
Is it in here?
No.
Hold on a minute, I'm going to get it right now.
Okay.
What's the table matter?
Huh?
We're going to meet on the sec, the 13th of January.
I don't know. Well, we're just ordering a public hearing anyway, right? I mean, is that what we're doing?
Huh?
We're ordering a public hearing on this?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to take a vote tonight. Yes.
So we're not voting on, to adopt, we're voting to order a public hearing?
Huh?
It's a new ordinance, so we're ordering a public hearing?
I want to make sure that you guys have the language, the document.
I gave them to, I emailed in, brought a hard copy, no idea.
Separately, separately, but let's, let's make sure that we...
I moved that we order a public hearing.
Huh?
I moved that we order a public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Am I the only one drinking coffee here?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Listen.
Now everybody's ready to leave.
Do we require a public hearing on?
Yes.
Okay. There is a motion to order a public hearing on Document 210-14, and that is a change in the ordinance regarding the 90 days temporary employment. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
I mean, second.
Any discussion? If there's none, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Counselors, I'm going to go into new matters, and then we are going to adjourn.
Council President? Earlier this evening, I, under the committee reports, earlier this evening, we talked about Document 398-14, it was a livery license, and I really wanted to stress something to people, what I really want to do is make a motion to reconsider the vote, which we were all on the prevailing side of.
To reconsider vote on what?
On 398-14, which was the issuance of a livery license. I just want to make sure people understand what we voted for. I know, I see...
I'm afraid, I'm afraid that we have stretched this long enough. There are three councils that are not going to change...
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, no, I'm talking to someone else.
Oh, the livery.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, you want to reconsider?
So at the next meeting, it could be reconsidered.
We approve it, but you want to reconsider?
Yeah, because I don't think, we were rushing, because we wanted to get back to the mayoral item.
Yes.
And in fairness, now the applicant is gone, so I don't want to take the vote away from him without him being in the room, but basically, what the young man is doing is setting up a livery service. Typically, a livery service means that you're working on contracts, that means you have a contract with the school department, or you have a contract with a medical company, that you're just doing contract work. His system isn't like that. He's trying to do, he called it a higher-end...
Yes, I remember, I remember that people would call individually...
Yeah, it was luxury, they, isolated because you could not pick up a second fare, so if you're driving, you don't have your one fare, you couldn't pay with cash, it has to be by credit card or by check, so it had some of those aspects of a livery, but it has a lot of the aspects of our cab service, and I just don't want this to become something that people start using to get around the medallion system, because I do, we do have a cap on the medallions, and that helps keep businesses in check. It did come up from some committee with a favorable recommendation, and it did come back from Officer Flores with a favorable recommendation, but I just want to restate to people exactly what we voted for, because I know a lot of people have cab drivers as their constituents, and I want to make sure people realize what they said yes to before they get a call tomorrow from some cab driver yelling at them.
I mean, basically, what we are looking for is a limousine service.
No.
Basically, that's what we're looking for, but they're not limousines.
They're not limousines, right?
They are Hondas, and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, right.
I would hate, I would hate to take, to reconsider the vote without the individual president, that he can answer questions.
Yeah.
We may want to reconsider at the next meeting.
Right.
So, yeah, I would be more open and...
Take a motion so that he'll be notified to come back.
So, I think we should send a letter to the gentleman.
Yeah.
Council President, I would say, does it make a difference to people that it's a new way of doing, a new model, and that I trust that the police will summons them, sanction them, if they're seen picking up any people? You know, I mean, I trust that they will do that, because they did it in the past, when we were cracking down on those people who were saying that they were liveries, but they were acting like taxis. And that's how we, that's how the whole thing started, we're getting a group together that would meet and setting up the hecking, I was, I'm happy to say that I was part of that, but I am not pleased with the fact that the gentleman left, that we didn't, I know what the counselor has explained, but if it doesn't make a difference, then why do it? It doesn't make a difference to anyone?
I just want to make sure that people are fully informed on what they voted on, because I don't want...
You told us.
Yeah.
see whether, if we disagreed after hearing additional information, we can reconsider the vote and vote it down or, or simply...
Suggestions.
Reaffirm the vote, okay?
Yeah, so, can I...
I just feel bad that they've gone, they've put out expenses, they're, and they're thinking that they're okay.
Yes.
And I, I just, you know, it's just a matter of...
Thirty days anyway, I agree with you.
Inform people and she has informed what the difference is, you know, so, I don't